Good afternoon and welcome to the Mesa City Council's study session for the afternoon of Monday, November the 18th. All of our council is present. First item on our agenda for this meeting is to review the agenda for tonight's council meeting. So, council, I know we've gone over this document a few times, but are there any additional questions, any information you'd like on our meeting tonight? Currently, there's nothing off of consent, but I'm, I know that we'll have some folks who would like to talk about the utility rate hearing. And so we'll anticipate that happening and Agenda Item 7, which is Items 7A through N, will more than likely come off the consent agenda. And we'll just consider them, conduct a public hearing and we'll just consider them all together if that's what council would like to do.
And then Mayor, council, this afternoon before we go up to the meeting, we're also ready to, excuse me, to follow up. There was some additional information you wanted us to include in the presentation. We've done that. So either now or when we needed. Brian can come up and at least go, we don't, it's a long presentation, right? But we could go through and highlight those slides that you asked us to include.
Right.
We have that tonight or right now or whenever you want to have that conversation.
Yeah, why don't we do that? Let's bring Brian up and then council, let's give Brian some direction when we, assuming again this is coming up upstairs, it would be good for council maybe or for staff maybe not to do the entire presentation all over again, but please let him know or let's decide now what we want to have included in the presentation upstairs.
So is this 2B?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Oh, this is 2B. Okay.
That's what I'm saying. If you want to do that now, we can.
Yeah.
We can make an order and just do that now.
They're sitting here. Yeah, let's do it. We'll skip to Item 2B on the agenda. Brian?
Good afternoon, Mayor and council. As the city manager mentioned, what we did was we took the presentation we presented to council about a week and a half ago and updated it with some of the information that was requested from council to be included. So the first, the first slide would be on Slide 6.
Yes, so I'll go over the big three projects. These are the largest utility projects that we have going on right now. So the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline, that's a $210 million project. And the value of that project is the water received through the GRIK exchange is with today's rates, $200 per acre feet cheaper than the standard city rate. So that's based on the 2025 rates. Central Arizona Project does project that cost differential, that $200 to slightly increase over time. And then also the additional benefit of this project is the water received through the GRIK exchange is a higher priority than the standard city allocation. So if there are reductions along the Colorado River, that GRIK exchange water is more insulated from cuts than the standard city allocation.
Will you say what GRIK means when you do that tonight? I know what it means, but when you do it so that all the residents know.
Yeah, Gila River Indian Community. Next one is the Signal Butte Water Treatment Plant, Plan Expansion. It's currently a $200 million project. And this project allows the utility to serve the city through build out. So right now, in the summer months, that plant's capacity is basically maxed out and we supplement through wells. So once this project is completed, it will also decrease the reliance on the groundwater pumping during those high demand periods. And then AMI is Advanced Metering Infrastructure. That's a $101 million project. So right now, customers get their meter read once per month by a meter reader. So the value of this project is, once fully implemented, residents will be able to monitor their, their usage throughout the month and see, you know, if they have higher usage than usual, they can identify any leaks and things they, they need to do and they can be more proactive. And it also results in a reduction in the number of staff needed to manually read those meters.
So Mayor and council, real quickly, you asked us to kind of identify those big, large capital projects that were included. They're impacting the utilities. We are in the middle midst of a very large capital improvement program in Mesa for utilities. And certainly that can put a little stress on the utility rates. But, for example, the first one is acquiring additional water source for the city. And I believe, Brian, Chris, the return on that is within how many years based on the savings we'll get from the water?
It's about six to seven years.
Six to seven years. So it's a huge investment, but it has an important return that while we get, we'll pay it back in six to seven years, but that water agreement is for 100 years. So that diversifying our water portfolio is important. And then that last one, we've been putting out these new meters throughout the city. This is a continuation of that. We've already, I think Mr. Hassert, when he was here, talked about even the ones we've already started to deploy, we're already seeing on our side getting that information about those meters. We can see leaks were already going to residents who didn't even realize they had an irrigation leak in their backyard. So we're saving those residents a lot of money on occasion when we find that. So yes, this is part of the what impacts utilities, but it's also an important investment for the long term for the city. And just, and this is our time to be investing in large capital projects. Sometimes we get compared to other cities and their rates, but one of the cities that's just south of us, that's why their rates are going up 25% and announced 95% in the next year because they're now having to do very large capital projects like we have been doing for the last couple of years. So it comes in cycles. Everybody sees, knows it's going to happen, so.
Mr. Riddick, I have a question about, I, I think I actually am the one who asked for this slide. So thank you very much. This is exactly what I was looking for, but my question, sitting here, all three of these projects, are they, are they not being financed by bonds?
Yes.
So to what extent, I mean, so this shows that we are actively pursuing a, you know, we're aggressively pursuing capital projects that will have a long-term beneficial impact on our rate payers, but these projects don't necessarily create a financial stress, you know, tied, that's tied to rates?
Well, so for example, the first one, right, the Central Mesa Reuse Pipeline will provide an additional source of water, cheaper water than we currently have. So the way we look at that is then in our calculation to the forecast about the cost of water and the security of water, that's where this comes into play. And it, and the problem is it's more than what we're paying today, but it provides the security that we will always have water and it's going to be cheaper water than the water that we rely on in our current portfolio. So it's, it's saving us from an increase that otherwise would come or a cutback in water to the city in the future.
I'm just wondering though, as we explain to the public the need for increased rates, the, the capital projects, to what extent is that relevant to that conversation?
Well, because it gets included in the rate. The debts, remember, this is the enterprise fund, so it's separate of what's happening on the secondary.
Doesn't the debt service come from secondary property taxes?
No, not on the utilities.
Okay, so these are, these are not.
Remember, that's why we have to be very careful.
I'm with you.
There's a lot of people trying to co-mingle this discussion with the general fund. They're completely separate, legally separate. Even when Jim and the legal team write up the bonds, the legal description, they're completely separate business enterprises.
So these are not GO bonds?
No, these are utility bonds that are issued just.
All right, thank you.
And totally supported and only supported by the utilities, not the general fund.
Well, then it's 100% relevant.
Absolutely, okay, yes. I'll take that.
All right. Thank you. It's directly tied.
Yes.
Yeah, the bond, bonds are paid off with utility rates.
Absolutely.
And on Slide 20, there is a line item debt, a service transfer, so that's paying the debt on.
Okay. Well, then I think that's a great story to include personally.
Okay. All right.
Council, other feedback. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Well, I was just going to add, I mean, we're dealing with today's dollar CAP charges for their water today and we're comparing that to the GRIK. And that CAP is going to increase their water rates as every year. They're doing that today for tomorrow's delivery. So, I mean, we're going to be saving money in, in looking into the future on our water rates to begin with.
Yeah, and Councilmember Freeman, as you know, the other part of this that I think is so important is we are investing in the security of Mesa's water into the future, right? Because not only is this water cheaper than the current water that we receive, but it's the highest priority, meaning it's the last to ever be impacted by cuts. So long-term, we're buying a huge security water commitment or source for the city of Mesa.
No, get it. Thank you.
All right, Brian, what else you have?
Yeah, so Mayor and council, the other requested information was a water customer profile. So Water Resources presented this, I believe, in their presentation, but wanted to bring it back. What this shows is.
Slide 10?
Slide 10, sorry. Yep, on Slide 10. The water consumption through June of '23 to May of '24, so basically a 12-month period. And what this shows is on the left, the water consumption in K-Gal. So the orange is non-residential and the blue is residential. So what this shows is that 54% of the consumption of water is commercial. However, on the other side, the other pie chart is water accounts. Commercial is 11% and residential is 89%. So what this shows, and this is what we've been kind of indicating in our presentations, is that commercial is now the larger user or non-residential is the larger user of our water, the consumption compared to residential. And the commercial is 11% of our total account. So a small portion of our accounts is the bigger user. So that's where we're trying to put the emphasis more on commercial rate adjustments than we are residential rate adjustments.
So as council saw in our proposed rates, they're significantly higher on the commercial side to get them to be making more of the contribution towards the utility, water utility that supports them. So it's not just the accounts, it's the actual consumption. So the next.
Genesis for that question was there's a lot of concern, particularly in my district, on the growth of the industrial and that the residential is basically having to pay for the industrial moving in, even though industrial water use requires more infrastructure. So seeing this, I guess we need to also tie it to how we're tiering those rates.
Yep.
Both for high water users, but also separating out the industrial high water users as well.
Yeah.
Is that where we're going to get to? Do we have a slide on that, by the way?
We had a commercial.
Yeah.
We do. Is that in one of the slides, previous slides?
Well, I definitely want to see Slide 11 reading this because I think this is important to how much, how much water our residential rates are using and then maybe we can find that on the commercial piece.
So we have the revised typical commercial. Go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, so this is the commercial slide and it, it's showing the current rates in 2024, the initial rate recommendation that we had when OMB and, and the departments presented on September 12th. Then on the right-hand side is the revised. So the large commercial, which is going to be that industrial user, the service charge, we have a recommended increase of 5.5%. And then the usage charge, which is 19.5% increase, so.
Yes, Slide 29. Do you not have that?
This is on September 12th.
So this is a backup slide. This is not part of the.
Okay, well, we can. I apologize. Okay. I apologize. So again, council, you, this was, remember, you asked us, I can't remember where we were having this discussion, where we were having this discussion months ago, you asked us to revise rates, right? You asked us to reduce the rates for residential. And at the same time, we said, well, we'll do that, but let's, Councilmember Summers' point, let's continue to revisit where we are with the large commercial. So that large commercial went from 18% to 19 and 1/2%. So we're being very aggressive in this idea of those large industrial users. So if you think about that for a residential who's being proposed at 5.5% versus the commercial now at 19.5%, so I think we're trying to employ that philosophy that council asks us to look at.
What their impact is on the system.
Right, recognizing the amount of water they're pulling in. And it's not just what's running in front of their property, right? It's, it's the treatment plants and everything else that supports that infrastructure to build, to bring that water. I apologize, we'll, we can make copies maybe and get that.
And it was also included in the September 19th presentation. But, and then this, we have a similar type slide on the, for the residential customers. So the initial recommendation that was presented on September 12th was a 5 and 1/2% increase for both the small, small user, which is 3,000 gallons per month, and then a 5.5% increase on the typical customer, which is 6,000 gallons per month. And then based on that feedback that we received, the recommendation was revised to reduce the service charge, slightly increase on the usage charges so that that small user is only seeing a 4% increase in the recommendation so that bill increase per month would decrease from $1.70 to $1.24. And then similarly, the effective increase for the typically user was originally recommended for 5.5% increase is now 4.48%.
And Mayor and council, just remember, one of the things we try to achieve in Mesa, we've been doing this for years, is that we not just look at the rate, what we need for this year, but we really look at it over five years. And they're also being very careful, what we call smoothing out the rate, right? We try not to have these big spikes in the rate over the next five years. So we try to anticipate if we're trying to have smooth increases to keep them fairly consistent over the years because what we've seen is in communities that don't do that, that put that off for a period of time, they end up having to come and ask for 20, 30% increases in any one year. And that's difficult. As difficult as any rate increase is, when you're going to something like that at 20, 30%, I think it just, it creates a huge hardship. And so the idea is we're trying to be, manage that, smooth that out over a period of time so we could try to find ways to manage, keep costs down, improve our revenue collections. So that 5 and 1/2%, if you looked at over the next four or five years, it's about the same. I think we got to a 6%, but there's about the same, it's a smooth rate increases over the next five years versus the philosophy we try to stay away from because it seems to get a lot of attention. So we could say, well, let's not do rate increases for a couple of years, but we have, eventually we're going to have to do it because we will dip below our reserves that are acceptable and then we'll have to play catch-up. And then that could be a, and one, trying to do that in a few months is very diff, I mean, you can, you can do it, but it's going to create a rate spike. We try to avoid that in our rate modeling.
Are you planning on saying that tonight?
If you ask me to, I will. Yeah, we can say that.
I mean, I think it's absolutely a point that needs to be brought up.
And so the question has come, and Councilmember Freeman, is okay if I present the point, is that if we don't do the smoothing and let's say, because we did this one year and it still smarts me, we said, let's just not do a rate increase, we're going to take a break. Well, that was great for that year, but nobody, guess what? Nobody remembered that we did that.
Right.
They only remember the rate that's coming up. And so then the next year, we had to do a 6 or 7%. Well, they were really upset with that, but they never gave us credit for the zero. And so we've kind of said, okay, let's just try to make this easy on everybody, give them a five-year plan. Our calculation, if we don't do a rate increase in water, I'm just going to use the water example, this year, then next year to get back to where we've indicated we need to be financially for this fund, for solvency, and as you remember, when we get out in the third or fourth year, we're actually below our standard of reserves, is about a 15% increase. So the question is, you know, we can, sure, you can put it off. You won't get credit for that next year, but you'll be faced with a 15% increase next year. So it's just, those are tough, tough. I know we're putting everybody in a tough position, but that's the reality of the dynamics of this fund.
Do you have like a range across the board utility rate increases, like the smallest percentage of any one, we're going up to the highest percentage of what we're going up?
In the council report that's attached to the item in Legisstar, we do, we do have the council report and in that, it's called Attachment 1, but it's kind of a one-pager. And for electric and gas, we show kind of a small average in high users and what their bill increase would be. For water, we look, we have 6,000 gallon, 10,000, 15,000 and 25,000 gallon users. They can see what their bill impact would be. And then wastewater and solid waste, it's just a standard increase, but those are included as well.
It's not, yeah, it's not, Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, it's not summed up to where we can say this small user is, is going to be this percentage or this medium user is going to be this percentage from all of them because we have such a diverse, we have five utilities, but in certain areas, they may have all five, in certain areas, they may have only three.
Water by far is the largest.
Okay, so.
And across university.
I guess we're getting emails saying, you know, that Mesa's raising rates from 3% to 30%. And so I'm just trying to find out like what is the accurate range that we're doing? I guess, does that make sense?
Well, the answer is 5, 5 and 1/2% for water.
But 4% for the smallest users. Isn't it a 4% increase?
Yeah, so.
Residential.
Oh, sorry, yeah, Mayor and council, so for water, for residential, it would be a 4%, but then if they also have the wastewater, which is a 5%. And so the average, what we did is we took the largest, so if you were in 20, I think it was the 25K Gal, we took the largest user. So if you were a user in the fourth tier, just made it into the fourth tier and you were at 25,000 gallons.
Which is not very many, right?
Which is not very many. And you took your water, your wastewater and your solid waste, the percentage of increase of that total bill would be 7%. And that's for the largest user.
So that's the largest user, largest accounts, largest increase?
Yes.
So we're nowhere near a 30% increase, I guess, is what I'm trying to say.
So what I believe on Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, what I believe what may have happened is that then when they were looking through the council report, yes, some items are being increased. For instance, a Tier 2 winner for electric is 39%.
Okay.
However, that 39% is on 2 and 1/2 cents. So it goes 2 and 1/2 cents to 3 and 1/2 cents. So really, it's like a 1.9% increase on the total bill. So what they're maybe looking at is that individual tier adjustment in saying 3% to 30%, not the overall bill for a customer.
The main number that most people are going to be affected by is the water, residential water.
That's the largest part of their bill.
Is the biggest part. And that's, if you're the smallest, is going to 4%. And the, okay. I just wanted to kind of get that out there.
Well, and then just to finish this slide, so the small user is 4%, the average user is 4.48.
Yes.
Okay.
So we gave you that chart that showed what percentage are in the small versus the average, and it's still pretty significant. The number of people right there, right, of all accounts, you can see below 6,000 gallons, what is the, even in July, it's still almost 47, 48% of all users. That's what they're going to pay. That's pretty close, right? And it gets higher, but those are the higher users, or you, that's the outdoor use. So for the majority of residents, they're going to be in those first two categories.
And the next slide will go to Slide 18. So this is the utility assistance slide that we presented on, and there were a couple of questions on the Mesa Can program, so we have representation from Mesa Can here, so.
Would you like to hear from New Leaf at this point? Do you remember those conversations or you want?
Some question around that.
Yeah, I think I'm anticipating maybe those same folks that were raising these questions might be back. So what's the status of if?
So can we have Mike and his staff come maybe to answer that question for you?
Sure. So just while they're walking up, we, our budget is 200,000?
Correct.
And so the question is, how much of that is, is that enough to get us through 12 months of utility rate?
And that's, that's in addition to the low-income senior discount that we also do, right? So it's, it's that. Oh, yeah. Go ahead. You want me to do that?
So you. Thank you for managing this utility assistance program for the city. Tell us how it's going.
Well, thank, thank you very much. We're here to answer any questions and do any quick presentation. We appreciate.
Here's my quick question. How much, if we, if we, we're giving you $200,000, does that get us through the year or do we need, or do you need to come back to us and say we're running out of money before the year's over?
It, it does not give us, the amount we need is significantly more than 200,000.
Okay. Have you want to?
Absolutely. So in this quarter, first quarter, we've already spent down, you gave us 200,000 this year, 125,000 is for us, 25,000 is with a partner Salvation Army and 25,000 is allotted for Lutheran Social Services. Of the 125, that is, 150, excuse me, that is ours, because it is 200, sorry, I can't do the math. Of the 150 that is ours, this first quarter, we've already spent down $84,000 assisting 153. I think you guys have some paperwork there about how many people we've already served. So we've served 154 households through this first quarter. We've spent down 84, 685, which is more than half of the Mesa Can.
Have you turned anybody away from help because you didn't have money, enough money from the city yet?
No, we, we cannot run out of funding. We must run a 12-month program. So what we may do is, most of our families have to income qualify. Families that get turned away is because they didn't qualify and/or they didn't do their due diligence. They had to apply, income qualify, provide us required documentation for us to be able to continue the paperwork through. If we do all that, then we'll serve them. But what is occurring now is between May and October, during the moratorium, most of our families did not pay a dime whether, and again, I'm not judging, but they did not pay a penny. I had a lady who walked in, into our offices on Monday, she owes $6,000 to the city. She, last payment was made in May. She has three adult children, there was three working members to that household, yet they didn't pay a single dime from June. So that's what's happening. When we turn people away, it's not because they don't income qualify. Our scope of work requires that we pay a max of 1,500 towards the household. That's what the city of Mesa has provided us. So if I have somebody who owes $6,000 and she says she can't pay the rest, I can't in good judgment pay the balance when that balance can serve three other households and I can keep the lights on and I can keep that, those families whole. So families, we, we can't help everyone and we're well aware of it. We, we try not to panic about the fact that our families are telling us, we're going to be disconnected and it's your fault. When they start coming to us, the first thing we tell them is, have you called your utility provider? Have you told them that you're in crisis? Have you told them that you can maybe pay a goodwill payment of $25 a month? And contact them every month during the summer months so they're aware of what's happening. That's not happening. Our families don't contact us until they are in arrears by 3, 4, 5 or 6,000 dollars. And we can't help them all. But if I can help a family and our most vulnerable do get escalated, our disabled, our elderly, our homebound, and those with minor children that qualify. Again, they must do their due diligence to apply, provide us all the documentation. The maximum that I can pay for that household is 1,500 and then we've maxed them for the year through your funding. But what we do do when our families do come in and we have helped them, say 90 days from now, they're still in crisis, we'll use other funding. So we'll use community service block grant dollars. To date, we've had 13 families that have come in that we used outside of your city dollars, 6,486 to keep the lights on. And that's other funding. But when I do that, I'm taking away from other services that that money is used for because it's very flexible dollars. So if I have barriers to employment or, so I'm finding myself having to steal from Peter to pay Paul. So we do allot money, CSBT, Community Service Block Grant Dollars to assist these families also for year-round program. But I must make decisions about how we can serve. If, again, if I have a $3,000 bill and we know that this family has been making payments to the city throughout the summer, we will pay the 1,500 that you allowed us to pay and then we'll use other service dollars to keep the lights on for these families.
Okay. So if, how long is the $200,000 going to last?
By January or February, I'll be sending probably a quick email to Ed. My Ed.
And that's usually how it works, that they come and visit, we talk about it and we kind of calculate, okay, do we need to do more? And remember, this is just electric utility customers in Mesa, right? And we've, we're.
Just electric?
Yeah.
If there's on their water bill.
Because we don't cut off water, we only, I mean, this is usually about the electric utility that we're talking about, the power, that's what we're talking about, right?
Okay.
So, but we will work with people on a payment plan, but we can't extend it into the next moratorium period either because then it just cycles up higher. So we're trying to figure out this balance of providing assistance, making, I think the dilemma we've run into, I think I talked about this last time, is when we have the moratorium for not turning off power, that word gets out and unfortunately, our customers stop paying at all, not even what they were paying in the previous months. And that just, you can see what happens. I mean, that's a huge number. So we, we're struggling with trying to figure out, I mean, we will work with New Leaf, we'll work on payment plans if they show diligence, but again, the concern is when you roll into But again, the concern is when you roll into that next summer month and you're not turning people off, turning their power off, that number could just keep growing. So we're trying to figure out a way to manage that. How, how many years? Or the months or the, I mean, year?
Years. The program is both in place.
The moratorium, Ed, we've done, have we done that for like three?
Three or four years.
Three or four years, during COVID times, I think, or something. Ed?
That a lot of people don't want to talk to tonight. So the moratorium went into effect in twenty twenty. The Mesa Utility Assistance Program, the two hundred thousand dollar program, we started in twenty sixteen.
How, how is it funded? Remind me, is it from the ABC dollars? Is it from federal dollars?
It, it actually comes from the utility revenues.
Utility revenues? So it's not the ABC dollars that are donated on your utility?
The ABC dollars are allocated through the human services fund that we bring to council.
Okay, all right.
All right, thank you. I wish we had time to do a deeper dive into this because we, obviously, we, if we're.
And we could come back and have this conversation. I think we just want to reset the conversation from some feedback that you'd gotten that there was no money out there.
Yeah, so there was some substance to what they were saying, which is we, we are, the need is bigger than the amount that's out.
Right, but if you're, if you're making payments and you're eligible, there's money today.
Absolutely.
Okay. Yes, Julie.
I was going to wait and to ask my question, but you said no one's turned away. But is everyone who wants to be able to get help to talk to you able to even get a hold of you?
Anybody, any resident can walk into our office and pick up an application. They can also go to our portal.
Okay.
And pull it. They can also ask us to mail it, scan it, and send it via regular mail. So, but these are all means to help them. But what may be happening is, come October, we've got like forty-five people walking into our office in one single day. I can't do anything about families being uncomfortable about, A, there's forty-five families and I'm number forty-four and they won't wait. So for, for us, we don't turn anyone away. We'll, we'll process the application, we'll income qualify to see if we've got everything. But the families must do their due diligence. We do need all of required documents to comply by the contract and then, and then we take it from there.
I, I think in fairness, if I may, council member Spillsbury, mayor, it's a very frustrating process. You, you need to know that it's, it's, it's not easy. We don't have the staffing. We don't really have the resources. The city does everything they can to help us, but it's, it's, it's not without its challenges.
Like you're not going to be, like, if you get a notice you're getting turned off tomorrow, you're not going to be able to go to Mesa Can and get help for tomorrow.
If, if in fact, yeah. If in fact, they're going to be disconnected tomorrow, we will process today. We will not get them, let them get disconnected.
But that's if they're eligible, that's if.
If it's not the weekend and.
And let's be clear, by then, Ed has contacted them multiple times. We don't, the first notices and you get cut off.
We're not that.
Ed is telling them weeks and months ahead of time and multiple notices.
For sure, yeah.
They've known this. Letters and phone calls, durable calls.
Right.
And then if we can't pay, then we'll contact the city and see what they can do to keep the lights on at least through the weekend while we can, so that we can process. And then on top of that, you may have known that we had the, the low income home energy assistance program, which went back to DES several years back. We then use the same application to apply to the portal. They're running about seventy days behind, but in seventy days, if we pay today, maybe in seventy days, then DES can make another payment on their behalf. So there is funding out there, but they must do their due diligence.
And, and we accept partial payments? Let's say a resident is paying like three hundred dollars a month. Summer comes and they get, you know, eight hundred dollar bill or whatever like that. Will we accept partial payments?
We do.
Okay, and that'll?
As they accumulate though, when we get to that October first date, that accumulation may trigger them being on the collection off list though. But that is part of what we look at when we're looking at payment plans. We look at whether or not they have been trying to make those payments throughout the summer. That it, that is mitigating factor in our decision-making.
A maximum, whatever dollars that is, so when they hit that, that triggers?
Anything over a hundred and fifty dollars delinquent can trigger a collection off, a turn off.
Okay, thanks.
And for us, if I may piggyback on that, if, if they owe a hundred and fifty dollars, we'll pay that hundred and fifty dollars because the reconnection fee is another three hundred. So it gets uglier once, once the days move forward. So if a family is a hundred and fifty dollars behind, we'll try to use, again, another funding source to keep the lights on. But it's when I have a family that comes in and owes three, four, five, six thousand dollars and our contract only allows us, the max to pay is fifteen hundred and that's a delinquent bill. So we'll pay the delinquent bill, but if they're going to still be turned off, I can't pay four thousand dollars when that four thousand dollars can help, like I said, two or three other families and keep them whole.
Okay, thank you very much. We appreciate that update.
Of course.
And again, we'll do a deeper dive on this when it comes time to looking at the budget and amount of money. Gentlemen.
Sir, maybe one more do you have? What was the other one you had?
Just quickly, we did want to highlight the Residential Grass Zero Escape Landscape Incentive Program. So if a resident qualifies, they could receive up to eleven hundred dollars towards the grass zero escape conversion. We, we do emphasize with this program that if somebody's thinking about doing this, they should reach out to the city and apply first because the city, the Water Conservation Unit needs to go out, do an inspection of the area, make sure that it meets the qualifications. And then it did, we have a link to the website where anyone interested can, can go and apply. And then also on the Water Conservation website, there's resources, tools, low water use plans, different tools that, that they can use to reduce water use. And then the last slide is, that we'll present is twenty-one.
Yep, last slide is twenty-one, Mayor and Council. So this was requested to show what this is, the revenues that will be generated from the, the rate adjustments alone compared to the increase in operating costs from the utility itself. So up top, the annualized revenue increase from the recommended rate adjustments. So this is basically if we did zero, zero rate adjustments to what we are doing, what we are proposing today, it would be twenty-nine point six million and this ties to the council report that was, that is attached. The increase in expenses from fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, that's projected to the forecast of twenty-four, or twenty-five, twenty-six is thirty-four point one million. So as you see, the revenues being generated from these rate adjustments is still less than the increase of expenses the utility is still coming up with because of the increase in project costs, increase of operating costs, things like that. So this was the slide.
About four point five million dollars short of the actual expenses. The revenue is still aren't enough, even with the increases, you say, are short of the actual expense increases this year. Now, we know that we had a very large reserve in the past couple of years and so recognizing this pressure from chemicals, the cost of water, debt service, we have intentionally drawn down the reserves to absorb some of this. But recognizing that will only last so long and then we get below our reserve. So when we set the rates, excuse me, it was a balance, we tried to keep the rates reasonable and get us close to covering our costs, but recognizing maybe we could draw the reserves down for a period of time. So that's kind of the, you see that philosophy being played out here.
Can you just give me an idea of other transfers and expenses?
Oh. So other transfers expenses is the transfer from the, from the utility fund to the general fund, any other capital transfers that we do, any lifecycle transfers, so any other expenses. So what we did here is the operating expenses, really the personnel, operations, chemicals, things like that. And then we have the debt service, then any other fleet transfers, anything like that.
The fleet transfers, the department, the fleet department is not in utilities.
Correct.
Right, but they maintain their fleet. So in order to cover the costs for the fleet, it's a transfer out to that department, which is not in the utility. Utility is really just an operational, the utility itself, where in the general fund, you have all the other supporting departments, whether it's fleet, whether it's payroll, whether it's a lot of those. And so we're making sure that utilities are paying their fair share for those services they get.
Thank you.
And Mayor and Council, that is the information that was requested.
So Council, what do we want to have staff present upstairs? I, just, just on this last slide, I think this does make the point that the increase, the proposed revenue increase is less than the expected cost increase. So in this strategy that Mr. Brady has let us know that we're going to spend down our reserves, if, if our attitude was just we're going to pass on the cost of inflation and the cost of increased labor and wholesale water and all of those things, we'd be asking for a much larger, or well, a larger.
A little bit larger, yeah.
So I think this is a point that ought to be made at some point.
So that was my question was, you were just showing us the additional slides you added because of things we asked, but you're going to provide other slides for upstairs?
And that's what we're asking you, which ones are your most, because there's a lot here.
Yeah, no, there is, but I think there's a lot of misinformation out there.
Sure.
I mean, all of it is important. We, I wanted to just point out on slide five, I think that absolutely has to be addressed and with as much emphasis as we can possibly make.
Okay.
Because there's just too much out there that's just comparing water rates and that's it when we need to look at this in whole. But I did just want to point out, if you just look at this slide, it, it does, homeowner comparison, it doesn't say like utility rates or yearly or like, it doesn't say anything of what this slide is, so.
So, yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Spillsbury, the homeowner comparison, it's a.
I think what you're saying is when you present it, will you, will you identify everything that's in here?
Yep.
Well, and just that it doesn't say monthly, yearly, it doesn't say in what, you know, and it has the categories down there, but anyways.
We can, we can more in context to this when we present it.
Yeah, just, it's not a, it's not a great informational slide if you look at it just on its own. You don't know exactly what we're talking about here. So I mean, I think that's huge. And then the, I, I think it's very important to stress the primary property tax and the way we fund things. I, I don't know how many times we have to say that, but I think that has to be addressed. So is there a slide specifically that talks about funding? How, like, you know, the video that I love, that I keep talking about? Do we have something in here that talks about that of why we use the utility fund transfer?
So yes, on slide eleven is the utility fund contribution overview.
Okay, just, yeah.
Actually, fourteen.
Fourteen, sorry, fourteen.
Yeah, just because there's a lot out there about like that we're overspending and so that's why we're doing this for slush fund, blah, blah, blah. So again, I just think explaining why we do the utility fund transfer is key.
Why and since nineteen forty-two?
Right, and that, and that our, our citizens have very clearly expressed that they don't want that primary property tax, so.
Yep.
Okay.
Those would be two more things.
I think we can get, okay, we'll work on getting majority of the slides. I think there's some slides in here we'll work on that, they're backup of like where the transfer is actually going. We don't get into all that detail, so we'll, we'll cover the majority of these.
This slide, I should have brought it up earlier, I think is more telling, it shows all of the services.
Side by side?
No, it's a great, it was just hard to graphically represent. I think it's available.
Yeah, it's on the website.
What slide is that?
But it's hard to find on the website.
But I think the point is, you can't measure apples to apples, right? That's why the home comparison with the.
Exactly, exactly. If you start breaking it out.
You can't, you can't break it out and do a comparison, I don't think.
Which is what everyone's trying to do.
Which is what they're trying to do.
Even.
You can't argue on one point, you have to consider the whole thing, right? Because you, to your point, the food tax, the primary property tax, those are all significant.
So we are going to do fourteen and fifteen even though?
Listen, we'll go through it and then if you, if, when we don't, if we don't touch on something you want us to, we can go right back and cover it upstairs too.
Okay.
So.
And I'm only one, you know, we don't want to do it all.
No, 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 I.
We'll go through, we'll work on, I think there's a, probably maybe four or five we can hold off. If those were your favorites, we'll come back and do it afterwards, so.
Well, Mayor, if I can just add to, you know, I sense sixty-six percent of our water customers are residential, correct? In tier zero and one. I think showing the consumption and the rate and tiers and how that affects, you know, that's who we're hearing from, is from the residential users. And so that's one of the reasons we pushed down, I think, the residential rate to four percent from five point five percent is to cover that and, and, you know, I'm not comfortable with any rate increase. I want to be honest with you, but, because, you know, we did this several years ago where we didn't do any rate increase, zero percent. And that cost us a little bit in the end that we're having to catch up for. So I know there's a lot of pressures out there, but again, there's a lot of pressures in our families as well in just paying the cost. And I, I think you said maybe a dollar twenty-four per month increase for tier zero? And then, I didn't, I didn't see one for tier one because those are typically our highest residential users. But is there a rate increase for tier one? Maybe I just missed it.
So yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Freeman, the, on this slide twelve, the typical user is six K gal. So that, that's going to be our median user.
Okay.
So originally, the recommendation was five point five percent. Now it's a four point four eight. And for the, for the high user, if, if somebody uses twenty-five thousand gallons, which is just getting into tier four, their bill is increasing about six point seven percent.
But on that typical user, the six gal, six K gal, it's a dollar eighty-seven.
Yeah.
That's what I was after.
Yeah, I think.
And that covers both our sixty-six percent of our residential customers at that point.
Right. Well, not, don't add them to.
No, I'm not, I'm not doing that. I'm just saying, our tier zero is a dollar twenty-four a month increase.
Oh, between the two of them, you're right, right.
And tier one is a dollar eighty-seven.
Dollar eighty-seven a month. I mean, you think about it, what are you paying for?
Pay for that.
Yeah, every year, yeah. We're not immune from inflation.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I'll say, okay, so just so we're clear, when this is coming off the consent, I will ask staff to come up and make a presentation. I will then ask for any blue cards. We'll hear from them. I'll see if staff wants to, can respond to any of the questions raised by the blue cards. Then we'll have council discussion. This, what we're voting on tonight is just introducing this, just putting it on the agenda for a, a public hearing and a vote at our December meeting. Okay, so we're not voting on the merits of this, we're just introducing it for, for the next meeting. All right? Great, thank you very much. Anything else, Council? All right, moving on then, so we, we do have more to get to before we go upstairs. Item, well, initially, we were talking about the, the whole agenda. Is there any questions about tonight's agenda other than what we've already talked about? All right.
Mayor, can we do the ARPA one next?
Yes, please. So let's go to that. Two A is a presentation and update on Mesa's American Rescue Plan Act, also known as ARPA funding. Welcome, Irma.
Thank you. Good evening. I'm Irma Ashworth, I'm the Finance Director and I'm here to give you an update on the American Rescue Plan Act, as we commonly call ARPA. Just to remind you of what we can use the funds for, there are a few broad categories. The city is using it to respond to the public health emergencies or the negative impacts of COVID, providing premium pay for essential workers, revenue replacement. And then two important deadlines, the first one's coming up next month. All funds have to be obligated by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four and then they'll have to be spent by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. This is a spending summary as of October thirty-first. We received a hundred and five point five million dollars. The city has obligated ninety-three million, which leaves twelve point five million unobligated. We'll talk about that a little bit later in the presentation. And the city has spent seventy-three point five million dollars. I'm going to go through some of the categories that we have with the ARPA dollars. And the public safety support, the PD Real-Time Crime Center was obligated and, and we used a lot of the ARPA dollars for that, mainly the technology, the non-woman mental health response and the ambulance purchases. All those projects are fully obligated and are continuing to spend. In the household and small business assistance, I broke this up into two slides. The first one is the dollar, the bigger dollar amounts. So the energy commodity costs, we used COVID money to help the residents and small businesses with our electric bills through the, and gas, sorry, through the COVID time period. We also have a United Food Bank food distribution contract that we have provided them with five million dollars to continue to operate to the food distribution. The restaurant food business incubator project is also ARPA funded. Most of that is fully obligated. They're working on some change orders that hopefully will all be signed and completed by December thirty-first. The Mesa Business Builder Studios, that was ARPA funded for the most part. Most of that is also fully obligated. And the Wi-Fi mobile broadband in the downtown area was also ARPA dollars. These are some of the smaller projects that we had in the household, small business assistance, the Mesa Small Business Technical Assistance Program, the replacement of the floor of the convention center, arts and cultures programs that is both at the IDEA Museum and the, at the MAC, Parks Youth Recreation Scholarships, Parks Fund and Fitness, and the Mesa Job Access Work Center.
Someone may ask, why did you replace the convention center floor? Well, because we use the convention center, as you remember, to distribute the meals and it got pretty beat up. So that's why that money was spent there.
Cybersecurity and central city operations, these didn't go any other buckets, I put them together. The SCAD investments and broadband security, those are almost obligated. I think probably in the next week, the fully, will be fully expended and obligated. And then we had premium pay for essential workers for, I think, two years we did that?
I think so. Police officers and firefighters.
And then the last bucket is the homeless support programs. We have a lot of programs in here, most of it is obligated. We have a couple that are not. So the New Leaf East Valley Men's Center Operations assisted with that with two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. The Helaman House Transition Housing, we have a contract of two point five million, they've spent almost half of it. And then the New Leaf East Valley. And then the new Leaf East Valley Men's Center renovation, the expansion of the East Valley Men's Center, that, 9.5 million dollars obligated, up to right now, only 400,000 has been spent, and I'm sure they're going through the contract process. The landlord participation program where we tried to retain landlords to participate in Section 8 programs, that's been very successful. A new one is the Phoenix Rescue Mission for the heat relief. And then Off the Streets programs in there are two larger projects that, as I was presenting this, preparing this presentation, still needed to be obligated, but there's an update. So Off the Streets program, the full 5.9 million has been obligated, the contracts were signed for Windermere and CBI on Thursday. So that's a, a nice big one. And then Sun Air, council did approve the construction contract on November 4th, it just needs to go through the process to get signed, and hopefully that will be signed next month as well. And the revenue replacement, just to kind of remind you what that was, they elected, they allowed us to spend up to $10 million just on general government services. We've only spent 4.4 million of that because we had so many great projects that we wanted to do with it, but if we needed to, we could use the full $10 million.
Well, yeah, or at the end of the day, if we get caught short with someone not getting money obligated by the end of the year, then we could, we could use this.
Yes.
But I think, we think we're, I mean, the idea is not to give any money back.
Yeah.
And so, we're just showing you, we've made a lot of progress in the last quarter of getting the money obligated.
Yes.
So that's important. If it's not going to be obligated, if we fall short, this is kind of our.
Safety net.
Safety net backup plan, which has tremendous capacity. And what we would do then is find something in the general fund that would satisfy this and then just kind of take the general fund savings and fund the project that was initially identified under ARPA, so we'll keep the city whole.
Mr. Summers?
Caught my eye in slide number five, energy commodity costs, 19, almost $20 million.
Yes.
Is that related to what we're discussing with utility rates?
It was, absolutely, absolutely.
So will you explain that to me a little bit? What happened there?
Go ahead, you got, Ed, you want, who wants to do it better night?
Hi, Ed.
This is, no, this is good for Ed to present this because this was, had a significant relief during the COVID period.
So what, what happened and then what was this for?
So if council recalls, we have a target that we benchmark our electric rates against with SRP. We have a range that we would like to be, and our energy portfolio is different than SRPs, so we were seeing a significant differential between our, the electric purchase prices that we were incurring versus what an SRP customer was seeing on their bill. So we used $20 million of this ARPA money to offset those costs, to bring down those costs for our electric utility customers.
Is this coming out of the impact out of California or which one?
Texas.
Texas, yeah. The Texas chill.
So was it the big freeze that created the issues and then the draw out of California that spiked the energy costs?
Yeah, and again, our, our purchase, our, our portfolio to purchase is different than theirs and our costs were higher.
We used this to mitigate against that spike.
All right, otherwise, we would have had the council at the time.
All those get passed on to our customers directly.
Okay.
It's not even in the rates, it's just a commodity pass along.
Correct.
So had it not been for this fund, then we would, the council at the time would have had to fill the hole with rate increases?
No. Our, so this is the pass-through cost, the purchase prices are pass-through, so our utility, our energy, our electric, rather, customers would have seen higher prices.
Higher prices, okay.
And the, sorry, the ARPA dollars covered it from November 21 through October of '23.
Almost two years.
So almost two years is the residents all got an insistence.
And I think this just ended in January?
No, October of '23.
Okay.
And it was residential and commercial customers.
Okay. Scott?
Hi. Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. I was just going to add, this is, because it's the ECAF, we call it, the commodity adjustment factor for the electric supplies that we purchase, so it's separate from the rate that it is literally, we just collect what we have spent for the resources. And my group works with budget to kind of smooth that out over time and looking at what those costs are. This was a significant spike in our ECAF expenses that would have had to have been collected directly from our customers, but with this funding, we were able to use that funding to pay for those increased expenses and keep that ECAF more even.
So the rate wouldn't have been affected, but the bills would have spiked.
That is exactly. When that storm hit and those prices started hitting us, we held on to passing that commodity cost on until we could figure out a way to use these funds, and then we just kind of paid us, kind of paid ourselves back without passing along that cost to the customers.
I imagine that would have been quite burdensome, the $20 million.
Utility, I think so.
All right, thank you.
And you said SRP was not necessarily subject to the same increase in costs?
Well, SRP had increases in their ECAF throughout that, that same time period.
Okay.
Or in their expenses, but they were able to hold back on some of those and you're seeing them to increase some of those commodity factors now. But they did run their ECAF at a loss for a while trying to provide some relief, but even they got to a point that they said, we can't do this any longer.
They probably had a longer lead time to absorb it, where we were sitting on a $20 million in a little fund, and we just couldn't hold on to them, so.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Irma, there's still.
No, I was done, so I can entertain any other questions that you may have.
The good news is, Mayor, we want this to be an amazing story, it's very bureaucratic, but the bill to spend 105 million dollars, sounds like, well, why can't you do that? But meeting all the federal guidelines, the categories that could be used, starting from scratch on some of these projects, it's remarkable. And I think you should go in back and look at some of, the ones we just talked about and others, we really emphasize investing in Mesa, so there's a lot of projects here that'll go beyond the moment, that will be, help Mesa for the long term. So we're very helpful, Irma's done an amazing job, I really appreciate her, she's kept us totally compliant, I'm not concerned about any future audits, and, and helping departments meet their obligations. So the good news is we're going to meet our deadline by the end of this year, although we still have some spend to do, we have the contracts, the legal obligations. So this is just kind of a wrap-up of where ARPA, when we started, to here we are today, we're, we're going to have the full benefit of the funds that were allocated to us. So that was just, want to give that in for each of you guys.
Thank you, I think several of us were here throughout that process and I, and it was, it was not the best of times, and I think we were all very intimidated by this, this blessing slash curse of getting $100 million of federal money and knowing that if we mishandled this, there would be real consequences and, and so that, this was a monumental task to responsibly accept and, and use this money in a, in a, in a way that we can be proud of. So hats off to Mr. Brady and to the staff that, that took this money and accomplished a lot of really good things with it, so thank you.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Next on our agenda, item 2C is a follow-up presentation on the city's homeless, homelessness strategy and updates on urban camping and the city park code.
So Mayor, we, this is a presentation we cut short, we're not going to start back on urban camping, we just wanted to, and when we were discussing urban camping, we wanted to talk about the services we provide to support our homeless response, so we're just going to start where we ended and present to you that discussion. The urban camping ordinance is on for your consideration, is it being introduced tonight?
Introduction today.
Introduced, and then we'll be passing that in December. Thank you.
Okay, good evening. Mayor and Council, what we didn't get to the other day was just talking about the programs that support our first responders when it comes to enforcing urban camping and working with the homeless community. So Sean's going to kick it off by talking about Community Court.
Thank you. Mayor, Councilmembers, thank you for having us. I just want to speak briefly about our Community Court. So it started in July of 2018, really to address the, the unhoused that had some prejudicated offenses, so offenses that had not been, there were charges, but nothing had gone to trial yet, so also to kind of clutch this population out of that cycle, the cycle you see throughout the country with the homeless population, and that is the cycle of addiction and joblessness and homelessness and arrest, and then embrace this, this group with these compassionate services that I'll speak briefly about in a second. We couldn't do this without, without our peer navigators, we have six community, peer, peer navigators from CBI, and they are there really to assist and assess and connect people with housing and, and health services, education benefits, you know, local, state and federal benefits, and, and of course, and it can help them, get them on their feet. As far as the, the most common charges that you see in our, in our Community Court, you know, the 24 eligible charges, they, there's, the most common ones are trespass, possession of drug paraphernalia and, and shoplifting. Regarding, and then of course, your, your city code and your park violations. And as far as who can refer people into this, you're going to have your, your judges, of course, and your defense attorneys, your prosecutors, and the park rangers and the police. One of the neat components of Community Court is each time they come to meet with a judge and their, and their navigators, they're at the court about, once a month, they have to talk about, you know, all the progress that they've made, but also what is one thing they've done during that last visit to, to help the community? So whether it's volunteering for a nonprofit organization or something as simple as if you see crash, see trash on the ground to, to pick it up and, and clean it up and put it in a, in a trash can. Of our, of our participants, their goal really is to get them on their feet, to get them housed in some sort of income, whether it's a job or just something that they're really good at, they can do painting, whatever they can get done to bring, bring in some, a little bit of money. And that will, of course, once they, this will help them graduate when they, when they reach, reach those goals and get housed and get some sort of employment, and they get their charges dismissed and many of their fines are reduced. Just, just a snapshot of September 2024 with, of the services with, with the CBI navigators that helped them with, and without reading each one of them too, you can see those are the number of people helped in that category, so housing, getting their IDs, which is a very common problem for them, losing their IDs or having stolen, getting them their birth certificate, social security cards connected to outpatient mental health services, and then assistance. And sometimes it's not just connecting to it, but getting them rides to the hospital or urgent care appointments, and of course, the peer counseling to give them some hope and, and encouragement. And then our model that we have, it's, our Community Court, the City of Scottsdale, Chandler, Tucson and Phoenix have all modeled their Community Courts after, after ours, so that's a nice compliment to the people who created this, this program. And then just a quick success story, Natalie, you know, up till, up until 18 months ago, she was addicted to meth and fentanyl and LSD, living in her car part of the time, living in a shed part of the time, and would treading enough money throughout the week to at least have one stay at a motel so she could get a shower. It's, it was a, you know, a terrible story, but she's now, again, she's 22 years old, but she has now been clean for 18 months and now works here in the valley as a peer support navigator for an addiction recovery group here in, here in the valley. And as far as awards that we've won, we've won the Arizona Supreme Court's Strategic Agenda Award for Promoting Access to Justice and also the Arizona Drug Court Professionals Award for Innovation.
All right, thanks, Sean. So I'm going to cover Office of Homeless Solutions updates. Last year's budget allowed us to really create this office and hire more staff to do the work for this team. So we, today we have a Homeless Solutions Manager, Delmar Algy, many of you have met him. In addition, we have Chris Witro, he is a retired police, Mesa Police Lieutenant, and he's our public safety liaison, so he really bridges the communications and programming with our first responders, our park rangers, and helps to create, create training and make our programs accessible to our first responders. We also have two coordinators, Deanna Lopez, who most of you know, she's been with us for a couple of years, and new to our team is Jusani Goodman. So a really great team that's allowed us to continue our work, but really expand what we do. A great example of that and how, also how we support our first responders is this new contract for navigation, which you are aware, I believe, our Hope Coach team from Phoenix Rescue Mission, this is a team of navigators that are dedicated to Mesa and really help to respond and help our first responders lead with services, so they can get them attached to shelter and services, get IDs as well, similar to the court navigators, but they're operating out on the street in our parks, and they can be called upon by a police officer or a park ranger to work in tandem with them to provide those services and really help people step out of homelessness and become connected to a lot of different great services. We also continue, of course, to have the Off the Streets program and that CBI team that we have that really makes beds available and shelter available to, through our program with Off the Streets. And our team just continues to work interdepartmentally with first responders, but also with our library, all of our libraries and other departments that experience impacts because of homelessness, we're all continuing to work together and, as well as with our community partners and coordination. There was a question last time we brought this presentation up, just what if there's no bed? This team that's presented in this photo here is really the answer to that. Even if there's not a bed, they are creating a relationship, starting to connect them to services, getting them on a waitlist or into coordinated entry, so they're getting them ready for that next step when the bed's available and connecting them to a whole host of other services. And with that, that finally completes our presentation from November 7.
Thank you, it was worth waiting for.
Thank you.
Good job. Council, questions? Ms. Spilsbury?
I don't have a question, but I just want to thank all of you across the board for everything you guys are doing to the park rangers all the way to the courts, and it's something I'm super proud of, that I love to brag about in our city, especially our Community Court program, I think it's amazing. When I had the opportunity to go and to watch some of the cases, it was incredible, so I encourage people to, to go, go see that if you haven't. But I just really appreciate the really data-based approach we're taking and the very compassionate approach we're taking, and I think it's incredible, so thank you for all the work that you guys are doing.
Thank you, Mr. Reddy.
Well, I think Mrs. Councilmember Duckworth first.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say, Julie said, and then thank you for all the work. I remember when I started in council, we really didn't have this program stood up at all, right? And during COVID, we had to make some sharp transitions and use them, but now it is just a system that works and making a difference in our community, it's huge. I remember when I started on council, we didn't have such a thorough, and we didn't have the continuum care, we would just, you know, address one issue at a time or have, work with our nonprofits, so appreciate all the work that you've done over the time to transform and, and coordinate and collaborate on this and make it a system that really works for our community. Thank you.
No, great, great work and information. I think my question, and I know I have asked in the past, are we able, been able to quantify the, the work that has happened here? A lot of people that see some of these initiatives that we launch, you know, look at, oh, you're just spending this amount of money and what is it getting to? Have we able, been able to put a, maybe some dollar amounts to, you know, the amount of what it costs to people that are, are in the justice system or? I know that's hard as far as all these strategies that we've had, but I think it really helps us, I think, identify, you know, our, our, our programs that I think, you know, on, on the, on the work that's happened, been successful, the success stories, one success story, I think, is, 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 is great, but I think if we're able to at least see how we can quantify some of these programs, our Community Court program, our, our housing program, I think it, it allows us to have some other data as well to talk about how, how great these programs have worked in, in our community, so have we, have we been able to?
So I, we could probably come back to you, but I just gave you a context, I just pulled this up from, and this goes clear back to December of 2023, I don't even have the most latest one. So if, if the idea is, well, what's the alternative, right? If the alternative is putting someone in jail or whatever, and someone can correct me, but I'm looking at something that was sent to me to provide preliminary jail per diem billing for communities that use the jail, the county jail facilities, it says housing rate, $137.73, booking rate, $642, and I think the booking rate is probably the first, the initial one, right?
That's correct.
And then the 137 housing rate, I don't think that's a monthly rate, I think that's.
I think it's per day.
Per day, per day. So Lindsay, you, think about this before you answer the question. So Lindsay, you, think about this before you answer the question this time. The, the daily rate for the Windermere is per room?
The daily rate is about $48 a day. 1340 a month.
But how much a day?
Forty.
Forty-eight versus 137. So that's a simplified, you know, I don't, we could get into a lot of nuances, but I just, I had that in front of me, so.
But it goes to the, the question that some people say, you know, as what, what are you spending all this money for, right? Like, I think it has these, these other effects in our, in our budget, in our community, that's where social costs, right? And so if we're able to piece out some of this ROI back to the, this type of work, right? I, I think that's even a group, you know, a stronger argument that these, these, these programs are really having an effect in both, not only people's lives, right, which is the, the most important, but also in our budget and our societal costs, right, that we have in the community? Because less interactions with our nonprofit communities that's, you know, have, you have to spend this money in. So it, it just has this greater effect, but however we can piece out some of these maybe context pieces.
We can do that. We can start working on that, yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. I think we could talk all day about this. Congratulations. We're very proud of the, of the work you're doing.
Mayor, 6A and 6B on the agenda with deal with urban camping tonight.
Okay. 6A and, well, presumably they'll stay on the, on the consent agenda, so thank you for that. All right, we're, we're flirting with being on time upstairs, so moving on, item three is to acknowledge receipt of meeting minutes. Is there a motion that is in effect? Thank you, Ms. Pillsbury and Ms. Duff, for a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. That passes unanimously. Next is current events and conferences attended. Council members, anything you'd like to share with us? Mr. Freeman?
Well, thank you, Mayor. You know, it was a really fun time at NLC. I had the opportunity, as well as all the colleagues too, but I got to serve on a Just Serve Award and panel. So City Mesa received an award from Just Serve about how our services helped people within our community, so I appreciate all those going out. So we received the Global Just Serve City Award, is an award that goes to cities who demonstrate a commitment to volunteerism, and Mesa was one of four cities. So I think the overall value, that was over $4 million in volunteer service. It was pretty awesome that we, we, we really smoked all the other cities. I hate to say that. But of course, the other cities were Boise, Idaho, South Jordan, Utah, and Tacoma, Washington. So it was sort of competitive, but maybe not. Then we also, the City Mesa received the Digital Service Award, and Scott Kahn, is Scott here? Oh, well, okay, but?
Digital City Survey Award.
Well, we're the top 10 ranked cities in each of five populations in categories honoring during the Digital Cities Award event. Is that correct? Okay, ladies, thank you. But anyway, we were, we received the award over 500,000 more residents and named the number five top digital city in that category. We tied with Denver, Colorado. So that was quite an honor that our digital people received in our city. So we're honored to be with them, and we attended dinner on their behalf, so. It was really rough, but anyway. But thank you very much for IT group and all this going on. So they have a really nice award. You did bring it, right? Okay. Thank you. That's all I have.
That's great. Congratulations, Ms. Pillsbury.
We're out of time, but I just wanted to acknowledge our Veterans Day Parade that we had. That was amazing, and every, all of our stuff and everyone that was involved in that. Huge turnout, such a neat thing to honor our veterans. And then, yeah, just, NLC was an incredible week. I think all of us serve on different advocacy committees, and we could talk about all of those, but we won't. But it, I appreciate the effort that everyone makes in their various committees and work that they're doing there.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't mean to, to rush you, so we can be a few minutes late upstairs. It's okay.
And the day before Veterans Day, that was celebrated with a parade. We were at the Mesa Cemetery. Councilmember Freeman and me, maybe just the two of us?
Yes.
Of course, the mayor. Of course, the mayor was, is always there. And it was a, a great memorial service, recognizing the 23 cadets that lost their lives training for the Royal Air Force at Falcon Field during World War II. And it was a well-attended event, a lot of dignitaries. The ambassador, our ambassador from LA was there.
Council General.
Our council general?
Yeah.
Okay, anyway, the mayor would cover that because he was in the circles.
No, no.
It was a very good event. Thank you.
It was. Anyone else? Thank you. I just, amen to what's already been said. The Downtown Mesa Barbecue Festival was last weekend, and I was, got the, the tough assignment to be a judge for the desserts and side dishes, and still thinking about it. That was great. Phoenix Startup Week, Mesa hosted that at the Business Builder Program at the, at the studio, and that building is just such a hit. I mean, we had lots of people come in, and we're going to wear that out. Able to, House of Refuge had a big food distribution event about a week ago, a lot of partners, and just appreciate the good work that they're doing. I was able to represent the city at the White House last week on a Classroom to Career Summit and talking about the Mesa College Promise. And we were the only city that was there and the only people talking about college promise program, so it was really quite a, a, a great way to show off what the, the good things we're doing in our city. So that, I was excited to be able to do that. And then this morning, I think several of us went to the Light the World Giving Machine kickoff. It's in downtown Gilbert, but it's a, an East Valley-wide event, an opportunity for you during the holidays to go and contribute towards a lot of good charitable causes. United Food Bank and other East Valley charities are the beneficiaries.
It's at Hale Theater.
At the Hale Theater. All right, Mr. Brady, what does our schedule of future meetings look like?
Thank you, Mayor. Our next council will be on Thursday, November 21st at 7:30 a.m. for a study session. Just a reminder, everyone, that tomorrow, really, the sixth, this is, or the 16th Annual Turkey Tuesday Frozen Turkey Drop Off, and so that will be out on the parking lot of the Mesa Convention Center. You can also donate funds, money to that, if you don't want to go out and buy a frozen turkey tomorrow morning. That'll be there from 7 to noon. This, for our community, we are hosting a City Hall Open House, new City Hall, this Saturday, November 23rd, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Pillsbury?
Sorry, that reminded me, since I'm on the United Food Bank Board, I need to say this. So yes, Turkey Tuesday, if you're able to give, and then if you need help, if you need a holiday meal, the distribution is on Wednesday at the Convention Center.